The issue of lines two and three. And we had asked if Senator Morrison could get back to us on information from the Election Commission about candidates who are not successful and whether they need to certify, again be certified by GEC. Senator Morrison?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. We, instead of trying to obtain that information, I worked with the colleague who authored the amendment to addressing that issue, and we've come up with a solution to address that. So maybe the colleague can actually move forward with this amendment.
Okay. Good. So Senator Tony Etta, you're recognized?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. After comparing with the author of the legislation, I guess I would, in order to, I guess I would have to withdraw my amendment.
Okay. So we'll do that first, the withdrawal of the amendment. No objections, so ordered. Okay, Senator, may we continue?
And then proffer another amendment to where we would delete after election or primary election of the candidate that's not successful in the primary election. So in that way, it keeps to the original language of the current law.
Okay, thank you. So on the motion then to delete the underscored on lines two and three of five, which is or primary election, if the candidate is not successful in the primary election, no objections, so ordered. Thank you. I have Senator Mike Limtiaco. You're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I certainly rise in support of this bill, and I know that, I want to applaud the author for taking the steps necessary to start the, start addressing the issues with signs. I know this one just addressed political signs, but there are still several inconsistencies in the existing sign law, and hopefully he could pursue that in the next legislature. I do want to proffer a couple of amendments, though, and this was kind of discussed in, by other speakers prior, and that's in regards to the enforceability of a lot of these provisions and DPW's lack of a sufficient revenue stream in order to properly enforce it from a manpower perspective, as well as for, you know, significant deposits and/or fees associated with the permitting process, so that it can make sure that those that do erect the political signs, you know, make sure that they follow the guidelines. And one of the, and I know that there's been some arguments about whether or not new candidates who maybe don't have the resources or fundraising capability to raise enough money to, to afford increased permits, and I just want to draw the attention to the existing fees right now. Currently, the permit fee is a non-refundable $100 and a deposit of $200, you know, and when you, you know, all of us that have been part of this fundraising process and raising money for campaigns, these amounts are miniscule. They're extremely low. They probably represent less than a half a percent of anybody's campaign budget, whether you're raising a lot of money or even a little bit of money. And really, the emphasis should be on increasing these deposits. I mean, for a non-refundable $100 deposit and a $200 refundable deposit, it really is a very insignificant amount towards anybody's entire campaign budget. So, Madam Speaker, I'd like to proffer an amendment to, the First Amendment would be to increase the non-refundable permit fee from $100 to $1,000.
Okay.
Okay? And the reason why is that this will give DPW the resources it needs to properly regulate these sign laws. And, you know, the prior speakers, Senators Nicholas in specific, you know, talked about how are we going to enforce these regulations? We currently don't do it now. How many times have you seen signs affixed to the traffic guardrails? How many times have you seen signs affixed to power poles? How many times have you seen signs that are in violation of the eight foot from the paved road or 100 feet from the intersection? There's violations of the political sign laws every political season, and a lot of it stems from the root cause, and that's that DPW doesn't have the resources or the finances to properly enforce it. And by starting first with these deposits, it will give them a little bit of money in order to properly enforce it, or at least start to enforce it. So that would be the First Amendment, Madam Speaker.
On the amendment, any speakers? Senator Rodriguez, and then Senator Ogden.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, if I can just ask, I don't know if I heard you right, is it $1,000 for the refundable or for the initial payment?
Senator, you?
Absolutely, Madam Speaker. Yes, it's for the non-refundable portion of the permitting fees, because the refundable portion is just that, it's refundable. You need, I'm proffering the amendment so that you can give DPW some definitive funding source to properly regulate the political sign regulations.
Was there any question?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. So, Madam Speaker, I, you know, without knowing what other amendments the good senator will be making to this legislation, I think that's a good start. However, a $1,000 fee, again, Madam Speaker, as I said earlier, is, to me, I think is still very high for, I mean, you, you know, we see it. We see individuals who, you know, who raise maybe $1,000 or a little bit over $1,000. And if we're going to say now that in order for you to be able to put up a street sign, that you're going to have to pay this $1,000 upfront, I think it's very high. I mean, I, you know, I suggested that earlier, is that maybe what we do, instead of making it a, making this whole process something that we're penalizing people for, is that we do it on the front end, you know, and perhaps, I would agree to a $1,000 on the refundable portion. You know, I think, you know, if we're able to get, if the candidate at least is able to know that, okay, you gotta, this is some of the cost of campaigning, and you gotta, you know, at least have this money to put in as a deposit. In the event you don't perform your duties and responsibilities in taking down your signs, then you essentially are going to forfeit this deposit. But to say that we're going to charge you $1,000 right off the bat to be able to put up signs, I think is kind of excessive.
Senator Ogden?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, with all due respect to the concerns that have been shared by the individual, the mover of the amendment, I understand exactly where it's coming from in terms of being able to provide, the Department of Public Works with the resources to be able to effectively enforce the compliance of this law. But you know, Madam Speaker, it really goes back down to, it really boils down to the fundamentals of why we want to encourage people to seek elected office. After this, it might be the Board of Education. After the Board of Education, it may be CCU. So rather than trying to be more inclusive in terms of allowing our people to, within reason, pay an appropriate fee, and I agree with him, by the way, Madam Speaker, as it applies to the 200 or the $100 non-refundable permit fee, perhaps that figure should be adjusted upward. But $1,000, to me, would be more of a disincentive from encouraging our people to actively pursue running for senator. You know, there's two individuals in this recent campaign who ran for senator and shared with me on separate occasions that they had run for senator, first and foremost, for the experience, and both of them said that they recognized that the chances and the possibilities of them winning were not necessarily there, but they wanted the experience and they wanted to ensure that they understood exactly what the requirements were for running an effective campaign, as they run side by side or alongside many of the other candidates. So it really comes down to that, Madam Speaker, and I asked the mover of the amendment, you know, perhaps not from $100 to $1,000. I think that I could be amenable to even a $300 or $400 non-refundable fee, but to go to $1,000, Madam Speaker, I think it really takes away from encouraging more of our people to pursue elected office and try to experience not only running, but serving in an elected capacity. So I raise some serious concerns, and I object to the amendment. Thank you.
Senator Nicholas?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I appreciate also where the mover of the amendment is coming from. My concern is whether or not $1,000 will lead to more enforcement. I mean, we're already paying 100, and there's zero enforcement. You know, you could jack up the fee to $1 million, but they can still say, "We're not going to enforce the law." That was the case in this recent election. The director of the department made it very clear that he wasn't going to enforce the provisions within the statute. And that's kind of my overall concern of this overall bill, is, you know, we're spending a lot of time and we're tinkering with the law that basically has been going unenforced for all intents and purposes, to a large respect. And the question becomes, if we really are concerned about the safety of our community, should we even be allowing signs on the easements at all? Or if we're more concerned about allowing for people to run for public office who don't have the name recognition and who need the exposures, then should we be tweaking the law in a way that's going to be more accessible? But, you know, for us to be saying we're going to lower it from 90 to 60 to 30 or what have you, or changing the fees from 100 to 1,000, you know, I think we're kind of missing the boat entirely, because even at $100, the fee wasn't, the law wasn't getting enforced at all. And there was no communication whatsoever that it was due to a lack of funding. So, I mean, we can increase it to 1,000, but if there's no enforcement, that means that DPW is just going to be collecting $1,000 from everybody who runs, and there's still not going to be any enforcement. You know, there's an enforcement gap. That's what we have here. Whether it's funding related or not, I really don't think it's a money issue, because again, we've been paying 100 bucks, and there's been no enforcement at all. So with respect to the amendment, it just misses what I think is the point of, are we even enforcing these laws? And what do we have to do to get these laws enforced? Perhaps the enforcement authority shouldn't be director of an agency who is appointed by the governor, who is a political, who's running for political office also. Perhaps the enforcement authority should be somebody else entirely, maybe the Attorney General or what have you. But right now, as it currently stands, the current system, the laws aren't getting enforced, even with a $100 fee. Raising it to 1,000, I don't think is going to lead to them getting enforced either. I don't think it's a lack of resources. So I appreciate the intent of the mover of the amendment, but I really think that maybe a reevaluation entirely of how the law is enforced altogether should be applied and should be considered by this body, which is one of the reasons why I was not in favor of moving this bill out of committee at this time, because I don't think it does enough to go back and look at the actual source of the problem. It kind of just tries to address it by tinkering with the law without actually dealing with the real meat of the issue, which is, it's not enforced, period, and it needs to be enforced. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. Senator Yamicheeta?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I agree with the retiring speaker on this particular issue. At the beginning of his statement, the mover of the amendment, the $1,000 per non-refundable permit, one of his first lines was that we have lots of issues with our signage laws. And I totally agree with that. We have been engaging in not only our political signs, but we've been talking about what it's like to drive through Tumon, where we don't understand what all those signs mean, and most of those signs are adult signs, which really shouldn't be represented in the way that they are. But that's one can of worms. This is another set of signage that we've been trying to address. I, and then I listened to the mover of that amendment, the $1,000 per non-refundable, in that that would help DPW enforce the regulations. Madam Speaker, I'm not sure that $1,000 non-refundable, let's say there's 30 people who run again in 2016, what would that, $30,000? I'm not sure if the $30,000 will ensure that all of our sign laws are monitored and implemented. I don't know. And so I agree with the most, with the senator who just sat down, and that is, I think, an overall study, an overall plan, an overall agenda, about what we need to do to ensure that political signage is supported, is fair, is accessible, is attractive, is safe, and that candidates are responsible and are aware. Or anybody who's a candidate should be aware, but sometimes they're not. So who should make sure that they're aware? That should commission the different parties. But that's a real big, big puzzle, and there are lots of puzzle pieces to it. I certainly, you know, I was real interested in it in last term, when we got it, the signs moved to a smaller size. And if you will remember, I really wanted them just to the size where names were printed, mostly for environmental issues, but that didn't gain the support that I needed. And so now we're at a point where many of the public are saying, "It's just dangerous." And so, but to say that $1,000 non-refundable, so that it can help DPW enforce the political sign laws, I'm not sure that that's going to achieve what the mover of that amendment wants. Thank you.
You're welcome. Senator Morrison?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I certainly recognize the intent of the colleague's amendment, but, Madam Speaker, I really want to go back to the intent of what we're trying to accomplish here. We're not trying to squeeze money out of candidates. We're trying to make a current law enforceable. And as previous speakers stated, we have existing laws that just can't be enforced. And, Madam Speaker, from experience, we've seen in areas of the contractors licensing board and different types of enforcement arms of this government, where they had to tack on a potential citation of a fine to get people to cooperate. If you heard some of the folks up at Highway, or you heard some of the folks at DPW talk about enforcing sign laws, they always talk about, they're doing their job. They go out, they tell, in this case, candidates, please remove your sign from a area, or it's not in a proper eight feet from the easement, or you're on a park. They're doing their job. The issue is, do they have enough teeth in the law to allow them to take it a step further? Yes, this is going to pinch a little bit, but I'm sure it'll pinch enough to say, hey, to your campaign organizers, "I don't want to be fined." So get it down, or take it down, or whatever it takes to correct that. That is the goal here. We've seen this in enforcement arms, where, in cases of the contractors licensing board. You start with a notice of violation, you start going through that process to let them know of some of the preliminary findings of an issue within an area where construction taking place. Of course, we have issues where contractors may not be cooperating within a timely manner, and then you see the board take it to another step, because they have that flexibility where, hey, we've exhausted the timeframe here, and we're now going to sit you, the board's going to sit you with a citation of X amount of dollars. And since they started to do that, the turnaround of rectifying these issues, it's like night and day, Madam Speaker. So this is from experience. We do have an existing law. I appreciate the efforts of previous bodies that tried to take political signs, very successful in reducing it to a certain size. What I'm trying to do here is contribute to that effort. I don't, like we always said, one bill's not going to solve everything. But this is a step, working with the agencies, the folks that I talk to, this is not necessarily Tommy Morrison's language, these are people that I've worked with for many years, and said, "Just a little thing, maybe we'll try this out. We can try studies and all that." But these are the guys that I know personally, said, "Let's go try putting little teeth, or sting a little bit in the pocketbook if they don't cooperate." What we're trying to do. Yes, Madam Speaker, they're doing their job. I'm not sure if the $1,000 is going to be something on the front end that is going to help give them more tools, so I'm not really sure about where we, what we can do with this amendment. Maybe we can go back and talk to these folks and see if more resources in front end will help. But all this legislation is trying to do is shorten the duration of the time in saying, "If you don't cooperate, DPW has a little teeth to say, hey, we're going to hit you a fine, and we're trying to do our job, help us out here, or face this fine." That's what we're trying to do, Madam Speaker.
Amendment, is there anyone who'd like to speak on it? There being none, Senator, you may continue then, if you want to close.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And I appreciate everybody's participation in dialogue, but, you know, when we go, when we talk, go back to whether or not, when we go back to the retiring speaker's last words in regarding, in regard to the fine, that is dependent on whether you have someone in the first place to go out and check to see if they're in enforcement. So you're still not addressing the funding to make sure that they're going out and inspecting in order to determine if they're in violation or not. So the fine after the fact cannot even be assessed unless you have someone on the front end that's able to go out and see if they're in actual violation of the regulation. And so, and in addition to address one of the other retiring speakers, whether or not $1,000, and let's say 30 candidates run, and that's $30,000, and the answer is yes. I spoke to the DPW director about this when we were addressing the sign laws. In fact, it's even, it's even bettered by the fact that this bill in itself allows for the amount of days for those signs to be up to be reduced from 90 to 60 days. Initially, it was 30 days, which I would have preferred as well, but the amendment was made to 60 days. So is $30,000 enough money to enforce from the 60 days prior to the primary election through the general? The answer is yes. It's sufficient amount of money for that short amount of time to hire the people to enforce the regulations. And that's the whole idea, is to make sure that the actual law, the actual regulations in itself, has the funding sources it needs in order to enforce it. So yes, I'm looking at something that not only going, the author of the bill has already addressed, okay, how can we make sure that they're in compliance? Okay, well, there's going to be fines issued. But we need to address, and one of the retiring speakers says, "Well, how are we going to enforce it?" Well, you need the people to enforce it. Increasing the fine, or increasing the permit fee allows to hire the resources in order to police and regulate the political sign regulation, and that's the whole idea of the entire thing. Another speaker had mentioned whether or not we're going to be limiting access to run for political office. And once again, even if you raise $20,000, you're still looking at, you know, a very miniscule amount of money as it pertains to what many have said in here is going to be the primary source of advertising for your campaign. If your intent is to serve our people, you're going to do what you need to do in order to make sure that you have that opportunity. A $1,000 permit fee to put up your signs is definitely kind of like the minimum you can do to gain the support of your constituents, I would think. It's not a significant amount of money. When you think of what you would otherwise spend, and if you did the analysis on what our political leaders have spent on their campaigns, this amount currently right now of $100 a fee is absolutely, you know, miniscule. $1,000 would also be in that same ballpark. But, you know, having listened to my colleagues, I'm amendable to reducing it, let's say, to $500. So the amendment would be to raise it from $100 to $500. Now, clearly, we can come to a compromise and recognize that a $100 fee is ridiculous. Let's at least give DPW some amount of money in order to enforce these regulations, to address the root cause of why nobody's enforcing these. The media is the one enforcing it. The media is the one that's going out and taking pictures and putting it on cable TV so to say, "Hey, by the way, your sign is not eight feet from the road." And then, of course, we go out there and change it, right? So it does have an effect. Give the regulated, regulatory body the resources they need to regulate the regulations.[1411.13][1411.13](Laughter). So that's the new amendment, Madam Speaker.
So, wait first, because, so you're withdrawing the 1,000?
I'm amending the amendment, Madam Speaker.
Oh, you're amending?
Yes.
Okay, you're amending it then to?
From 1,000 to 500?
Okay, so to $500. Okay, so are we going to start a whole new list of members who would like to speak, Senator, on the $500 now, non-refundable permanent fee? So Senator Tom Etta and Senator Nicholas.
What is refundable?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I've been trying to follow the discussion here, and, you know, I kind of just, I guess I'm a little disturbed by, you know, when somebody makes a statement, "Oh, you know, $1,000, it's miniscule." But really, I think that a lot, especially new candidates, when they start out, you know, a lot of them, they plan out their, they plan out their budget, probably by the time that the window opens to allow them to be able to post up their signs. Whatever budget they have is pretty much tied up. You got to start, you got to start getting with the media to place your ads, and you got to put down money upfront. So, you know, it isn't as if a lot of these candidates have money, just, you know, are loaded with funds from the very beginning. So while $100 or, you know, that it is currently seems kind of low, at least it requires the person to put some skin in the game. Now we're taking it, I guess it's gone from 100 to 1,000, and then, and then now we're looking at backing it down to $500. But, you know, I just, we're wanting new candidates to come and enter the race and offer themselves to serve the community, and it seems like we're putting these obstacles up front before they even get a chance to run. Now, you know, for some candidates who are, certainly are fortunate enough to have a large bank account and all that, that's fine, you know? But, but let's face it, a lot of these, a lot of the candidates, the new candidates that are running, don't have that kind of money. And I just can't understand why we want to put roadblocks up front. Now, I can understand this thing about, you know, after the campaign is over, you know, you've got so many days, go out there and clean up your stuff and get it off the roadway, and if you don't, then you've got some stiff penalties. But this idea of putting roadblocks up front is just, I just find that really very bothersome. And so, you know, whether it's 1,000, whether it's 500, I say leave it at $100. So I, I, I don't know where we are with the motion, but, you know, to raise it above the $100 that it is right now, I really would object to that.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Nicholas, on the amendment?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And, you know, the retiring speaker really, really made some good points, and I appreciate the effort of the original proffer of the amendment to try and compromise to a lower amount. But for me, it begs the question, I mean, we paid $100 for the permit in the last election. What did we get for the $100? What did the people of Guam get for the $100 in terms of enforcement? There was a lot of sign laws that were clearly violated that went unenforced, but the $100 went to the agency, and I don't know where it went, but it was paid and it was, it was kept. We raised it to $500, what's to ensure there's going to be any enforcement thereafter? The intention is to create an environment where we're going to be able to have an enforceable sign law, something that is going to have the necessary resources in order to get it done, something that's going to strike the right balance between providing for a venue for new candidates and existing candidates to be able to campaign effectively and get their names out there for the community to understand who they are and what they stand for, but also in a way that's going to make sure the community isn't put at any greater risk by having these signs out there on the public easements. And I think that, again, the underlying problem that we're having with not only this amendment, but amendments previously and the bill, and for me, in its entirety, is that we're trying to fit a round peg into a square hole, or I don't know which way it goes anymore, but it's just not fitting in with what we're trying to, I think, accomplish in this body, and that is to come up with a more comprehensive way of addressing and striking this balance. And it actually is a very, very sensitive issue, because, you know, are we going to continue to allow roads on public easements or not? If we are, what's the cost associated with making sure those laws get enforced? And how do we make sure they get enforced properly? Are the current fees adequate, or are they not? As a matter of fact, one of the key things about raising or lowering fees is getting public input also, and getting input from the agencies also on the records, so that we can fully understand, is it adequate? Is it not adequate? What happened with the money that you guys got previously? What enforcement actions were actually taken previously? How would this increase in the fee increase enforcement? You know, and then, and then for me, the other question becomes, are all elected, are all elected offices to be treated equally? I mean, you know, we see barely any CCU signs going up as it is. You know, is this going to make there be even less? And then look at the gubernatorial elections. I mean, signs galore, and they're going to pay $500 only, versus somebody who's going to put up maybe three or four and pay $500 also? The agency's going to have to go out and enforce more for the one who has more signs, but they're all paying the same initial $500 deposit? I mean, there's just a lot of questions that need to be answered, Madam Speaker, and so I, for one, really think the entire bill just needs to go back into committee and be vetted, and maybe have some round and be vetted, and maybe have some round tables and bring in some other stakeholders so that we can really fine tune this to satisfaction of the community. But with respect to the amendment, again, whether it's 1,000, whether it's 500 or 100, what did we get for the $100 that was already received and spent by the agency? What kind of enforcement did that render? And would an increase of that fivefold, you know, result in the enforcement that we're looking for or not? Those are just a lot of questions that linger in the air. And as the retiring speaker mentioned, in our good intention to try and tighten up this enforcement environment, whether or not that actually happens with a higher fee begs to be answered. What will be a byproduct of that is you will have individuals who will be less likely to be able to afford that fee and probably less likely to be able to run. And, you know, even candidates who do run, who aren't able to raise that much money, they do bring something unique to the whole process. They're able to participate, they're able to go to forums, go to debates, provide perspective, and that's healthy for the community. You know, and the more, the merrier when it comes to being able to have individuals for our people to select from, to be their representatives. And anything that we can do to help facilitate that process would be a good thing. And if allowing for signs and public easements is in line with that, then we need to make that as accessible as possible. However, we do need to also balance that with the safety and security of the community. So with respect to the amendment, we really need to ask ourselves, are we going to be solving it with these piecemeal amendments to the overall bill? Or is the overall building to be reconsidered in the greater scope of what we're trying to achieve here for the community? So, you know, again, I appreciate the effort to compromise to a lower amount. I appreciate the comments made by the retiring speaker, and I think that, you know, everything that's being talked about today kind of underscores the fact that we need to look at this whole issue a little bit more closely. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. Senator Morrison?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Again, I appreciate the move of the amendments intent here. And, again, I go back, Madam Speaker. 30 years ago, there was a, one example, I mean, is you had a contractors licensing board law that had great things, can do many things, but to enforce the industry. But when it came down to it, these investigators were handicapped because they could only go so far as notices, 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 phone calls, phone calls, you're in violation, you're in violation. So I came down here 30 years later as an executive director of the licensing board, and I asked the body of this legislature to help out a little bit. And discussions to stakeholders and experts in the community involving our contractors, we came up with a simple provision to incorporate into the existing law to allow investigators the flexibility to go out and cite contractors for violations of the law. We have a good signage law in existence, Madam Speaker. Lot of good work done by previous legislature. I think what is missing here is giving it some teeth. And that's all we're trying to accomplish here. We don't need to revamp this whole thing, go out and study. Well, if it came down to it and we did comparisons, you have many jurisdictions that don't even allow political signs in public property. They could have a complete ban for political signs in public property. But this is, so this is really a compromise with the people of Guam, you're seeing we could, and working with those that are enforcing the law, but just can only go so far. So we have a good political signage law in place that has been worked on by many efforts. I'm sure there's a lot of studies that went into that, putting that existing law in place. It's been fine tuned over time. Of course, we just saw on the 31st, reduce it to four by eights by Senator Yamashita, and that's working fine. All we're trying to do is give the enforcement arm the ability to say, you know what, I took this to a level to try to get these folks in compliance. And now we have to squeeze it out of their pocket, and it's worked, Madam Speaker. It's proven, not only in the contractors licensing board, this is in the PUES board, this is in Department of Labor's enforcement arms. And it's a tool. It's just a tool. It's not to say we're going to go out there and try to dry up everybody's pocket that's trying to run. We're just saying it's a tool. If they need to go to this last extent of enforcing the political signage law, then so be it. But I know many of us here, we do our best to comply with the signage law. Some, there's some inadvertent things that our organizers may, you know, may have unintentionally violated the law, but they went on to correct it. I'm sure there'll be many of the new candidates that will learn from this, but I'm saying it's a tool. All I'm trying to do is give them a tool that they asked for. I didn't hear the part yet, and I thank the mover of the amendment that is looking to try to put resources in the upfront. But, again, I agree with the previous speakers as saying that we, that maybe that's something we probably need to evaluate further, and if there needs more resources, maybe we have to look at that in the budget process. That's where we could probably look at that, for the enforcement arm of highway safety encroachment. But, Madam Speaker, let's be very clear about this. There's an existing law. What we're trying to do, as we do with many laws out there, is to make additions, revisions that are necessary to make existing laws better. And this is coming from those who enforce these existing laws that are asking to do a little fine tuning to it. Not, they didn't ask, they did not ask at the public hearing to do a study, to revamp the whole thing. Actually, the Department of Public Works fully endorsed this bill. So until such time, they will come down and ask for the necessary tools, then let's move forward with that. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. Anyone else would like to speak? You did on the 500 already. You did. You're the first speaker on that first, oh, okay, since you missed the first 1,000, I'll let you speak on the 500 again.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. You know, and just listening to the sponsor of the bill, it seems that the objective here is to provide, to raise, to be able to, I guess, raise funds, or so that they can go out there and enforce it. But it seems that we need to do, we need to get those resources up front. And so I would like to make an amendment to...
To the amendment?
I'm sorry?
It's an amendment to the amendment of the $500? We're speaking of the $500 amendment?
Oh, on the amendment?
Yes.
Okay, then I'll wait until after the amendment's been voted on.
Okay, that would be good. Okay, thank you. So I would then ask the author, the mover of the amendment, if you would like to close.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And, once again, I appreciate everybody's participation in the debate on the bill. But once again, the fines are after the fact. That's predicated on the fact that you have someone to enforce the regulations to begin with. We still haven't addressed that. So it makes no difference. We talk about putting teeth in the bill, yet you don't have anybody, you don't have anybody to actually go out and enforce it and actually issue someone a citation or a notice that they're in violation of the regulation. Now, that's the whole issue. I've spoken with the DPW director regarding this, and there are no resources. At the current fee for the permit, even if 30 people are running, it doesn't amount to enough to actually put someone out there to say, okay, just go and make sure that they're following the regulations. And that's what raising the fee is attempting to do, is to give them the resources that they need. And in no way do we intend to put up roadblocks for anybody to run for political office. But we've all acknowledged the fact that we have seen violations to the political sign regulations throughout all the campaigns that we were either involved in or not involved in. And that's what the issue for the bill is. I know that retiring speakers have, you know, have taken aback by the fact that we're trying to raise the fee. And raise the fee is not to make any more roadblocks in our already existing for people to run for office. It's actually fix the problem and to try and get DPW the resources they need to try and send somebody out there to regulate it. That's the problem with the existing sign law, not in relation to political science, but in regular science as well. It's just, they just don't have the bodies to go out there and make sure everybody is following the regulations. And so by not addressing that, you do nothing. You do nothing to the regulation. And I agree with this bill in its totality, but it goes back to one of the retiring speakers saying, it's not being regulated now. It will not be regulated as well if we pass this bill, because, once again, you haven't identified the root cause of why it's not being regulated. There's no resources. They don't, can't afford to put people on it to go out and make sure that they're following the regulations. So the amendment stands. I know there was an objection, we'll vote on it.
Okay, so...
It was at 500?
Yes, it's $500. Although those who spoke earlier didn't come right out to say that they, oh, yes, we did have one, Senator Addatt did oppose. Otherwise, the others had spoken not so much in favor. So since there is an objection, we're going to call for the vote in favor then of then making the non-refundable fee $500, please raise your hand in favor of the 500. The amendment failed. Senator, you still have the floor?
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You still have the floor.
Madam Speaker, I was going to amend the next section for the refundable portion as well, but it's very clear where the body stands on it, is that they don't want to pay any more for political sign fees. So I'll just go ahead and just pass that up. We'll let the voters decide. Madam Speaker, the next section that I'd like to amend...
Just a point of order, Madam Speaker. We still need to retire the original amendment for 1,000?
Oh, no, no, he said he was going, oh, yeah, you're right. Because he, yeah, because when I asked you originally, you're right, when I asked you originally if you wanted to withdraw, and you said you were going to amend it. So since the 500 failed, then we're back then to the original, because you amended the amendment.
Okay, Madam Speaker, then I would draw that $1,000 amendment altogether. It's clear where the body stands on it.
No objections. Okay, so there's no objections, so, okay. You may continue.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to amend another section of the bill as well. Unfortunately, my bill doesn't actually have page numbers, but I believe it's on page three, section three. And this is in relation to the political sign erections, where current law allows for political signs to be erected or posted within 100 feet of any entrance to a public school or upon any public school property, including school fences and gates. And it has an exception there, except after 6:00 PM on the day before the election date. Now, I know in the last election, there were several callers into a very popular radio show that had mentioned that these signs are just left on the school fences, you know, even after the election, and a lot of the school personnel has to go out there and take them off. And, you know, you wonder why that exception was made, and it's very clear that when the exception was made, it's because these schools are used as the polling sites. But once again, I don't think it makes, it justifies the erection of the signs on the existing fences or after a certain time. So the amendment, Madam Speaker, will be to remove that exception altogether and just stay within the, what I believe was the spirit of the original law, but somehow got an exception added to it that allowed for the posting after 6:00 PM on the day before the election date. So the amendment, Madam Speaker, will be to strike out except after 6:00 PM on the day before the election date.
On the amendment? No objections? So ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You still have the floor? So no more signs, guys, on this, yep, that's it. That's good for this.
That is an excellent...
Yeah, that's pretty, that's pretty good.
That's excellent. Thank you, everybody, for your support. Merry Christmas. Madam Speaker, there were several other amendments, all of which had to do with the amount of days before the special or primary election, but the author had already made the amendments. So, Madam Speaker, in closing, I still think that in order for this bill, even the prior existing law, to have any effect, you need to give them the resources to actually go out and regulate it. We still haven't addressed it. We attempted to do it by increasing the fees. Obviously, the body spoke, is in opposition to that. So what we have here is a bill, a change of regulations that, once again, will otherwise go unenforced. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. On the main motion, Senator Tom Addatt, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, the retiring speaker, I really fully agree that we need to take a look at providing those resources up front. And up front is when the candidate goes to the Department of Public Works to apply for a permit to be able to erect signs. And so I would like to make an amendment so that then on page two, line 19, right now, the way the law reads is that I go up and I, to get my permit, I pay a non-refundable permit fee of $100 and a deposit of $200. Now, for the guy who only has enough money, or who may be more efficient about where he erects the signs, let's use the case where he only has enough money to erect 10 signs. He has to pay $100 non-refundable and $200 refundable deposit. Now, the guy who has enough money, or the person who has enough money to erect 200 signs pays the same amount of money. And so I would like to make the amendment that on line 19, it would read, will charge, DPW will charge a non-refundable permit fee of $100 and a deposit of $200 for every 10 signs erected. So I got 10 signs. It can be four by eight, or it can be two by two. 10 signs, I pay $100 a non-refundable fee and $200 deposit. The next 10 signs, you have to pay another $100 and another $200 deposit. And so that seems logical. The person that has got that kind of money to, you know, just pepper the island with signs, then anti-up. Because I think in addition, in addition to wanting to get the resources up front so that DPW can send inspectors out there to inspect, there's also, you know, this visual assault. When we're driving down the street, and sometimes there's that mentality that, you know, if I post a sign every 10 feet, guarantee I'm going to get reelected.
There is. I resemble that.
You know, so, so fine. If you want to do that, you want to pepper the island with signs, then you're going to have to pay up front. Now, that is not contrary to what I was saying earlier, where we do not want to put obstacles in front of these people who want to run, okay? It's just saying, if you got the means to put up 100 signs, then you got the means to put up this refund, this permit fees. So that's my amendment, Madam Speaker, on line 19, where it reads, after $200 for every 10 signs erected. Thank you.
You're welcome, Senator. On the amendment, Senator Mike Limtiaco?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Gosh, I wish that was the amendment to my amendment, because it would have made the same thing. It's exactly the same thing. $1,000, 100 signs, okay. You at least have some, except for the retiring speaker's fact that he addresses those that are only going to put up 10 signs. Either way, right? I remember a former colleague of ours that recently passed away, his, something that I take to heart very, very much, he said, "Take what you can get." So, Madam Speaker, I'm in 100%, I'm sorry, 1,000%. 1,000% in support of the amendment. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. Senator Yamashita, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And as I opposed the amendment that was moved by the Senator wanting $1,000, I object to the amendment that's currently on the floor. While I do agree that we should not put obstacles in front of the, particularly the first timers who are running, who are new to the landscaping of campaigning, who are learning how to do fundraisers and ask for money, I also suggest that those who are seasoned candidates, I don't think that there should be obstacles, not the right word, but there shouldn't be a different standard for those either. I think that the playing ground should be fair. If a candidate succeeds in raising enough money and getting... If a candidate succeeds in raising enough money and getting enough space and getting enough power, human resource power, to put up all those signs and maintain them and take them down during storms and put them back up during storms, good for them. Good for them. And I also suggest that those of us who are responsible, most of us are responsible candidates. We know who are not. We pay real close attention to being responsible. The last thing we want is anybody to be hurt by our signs, the rebars and the cans and all of that. But to say that because a candidate is able to raise or have 30 signs, that they have to put up $600, that kind of sliding scale, I don't agree with. It's hard work to be a candidate. It's hard work to ask for support, and just because you are able to put up 30, 40, 50 signs, I just don't see why you would have to put more of a deposit. And I do suggest that those people who do put up 30, 40, 50, 60 signs, they actually do pay a lot more attention to what is out there and to the environment and what is happening. So for that purpose and that reason, Madam Speaker, I object to that amendment.
On the amendment, Senator Hagen. Change of mind, in case anybody... Is there anyone who would like to speak on the amendment? Senator San Nicholas.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Again, for me, my concern goes back to the question of enforcement and timelines and everything else. I mean, for example, we're under the assumption that we're going to be able to put up signs, at least in the bill, 60 days prior to an election, and you're going to have to pay, if this amendment passes, per 10 signs, you know, based on how many you're going to put up. But what if somebody elects to only put up their signs the week before the actual election, and they go and they put up, you know, hundreds and hundreds of signs, and the director of the agency doesn't enforce it? Doesn't tell them to take their signs down, doesn't have somebody go pull their signs down, doesn't find them, they don't enforce it. Everybody else who paid the hefty fee early on to be able to put their signs up 60 days in advance is going to be out of luck in their pocketbook because they had to pay that fee, but the person who waited the week before the election, who took a chance and said, "You know what? Based on the risk reward here, if I put up all these signs one week before, I'm willing to risk it that the director's not going to ask me to enforce it, or he's going to call me and I'm going to be able to, you know, avoid him for a week, and I'm going to get away with putting up 1,000 signs while everyone else can only put up, you know, 200." You know, again, for me, it all comes back to the question of enforcement and whether or not this higher fee or this lower fee or whatever kind of fee is going to result in the law being enforced and being enforced fairly. I mean, we even have, within the provision of the law, a 48-hour period. So technically, you know, I could wait until two days before the election, put up my 1,000 signs, and not pay the same fee that everybody else had to pay, and I have my 48-hour window before I'm going to have to be assessed any kind of fines anyway. You know, so for me, it all goes back to the question of, are we really achieving what it is that we're intending to achieve by amending and introducing and moving forward this bill that tries to work within the current framework? Because, Madam Speaker, we've seen in the last election, we've seen in elections past, that the current framework, I think, is the underlying problem. We cannot have a political appointee of an elected official be responsible for enforcing campaign sign laws. You can't blame the political appointee for saying, "Okay, you know what? My godzu is doing it, so I'm going to not look." Can't. So we can tweak the fines and the fees and the regulations all we want, but the problem is, I believe, that we shouldn't be having a political appointee in charge of enforcing these laws, period. You know, I think that the proper channel may be either the Office of Public Accountability or the Attorney General, somebody who the people will be able to vote and say, "Hey, you know what? Yeah, you're not doing your job enforcing the sign laws. I'm not going to vote for you." Maybe those are the proper people to be able to enforce this law. But for us to make these amendments and to tweak it for the same underlying structure that I believe hasn't been working because of the channels and the lines that kind of tie the hands of the person responsible, I think that's where the problem lies, Madam Speaker. So I appreciate the intent of the amendment. There are some other issues, though, that come to my mind with it. I mean, yeah, you may pay for every 10 signs, but if the issue is, you know, the visual assault or the exposure of unsafe conditions to our community, we don't just have that issue with respect to the number of signs, but the duration that those signs are out in the community. You know, so maybe it should be a fine, you know, per number of signs per day, or a permit per number of signs per day. I don't know. But I think that that's kind of put in the cart before the horse. We're getting into the detail without addressing what I think is the bigger picture issue here, of us needing to completely realign who is actually in charge of enforcing the entire statute, not just the details within the statute, but the entire statute. So I just wanted to make that point, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
Senator Morrison.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Again, I appreciate the mover of the amendments. It may, it may level the playing field. Who knows? I mean, because, you know, I guess, like, pay as you go. If you want to, again, put more out there to advertise, you've got to pay more. I mean, it goes for anything in advertising, right? If you want to move money in certain areas to get your message across, you're going to have to pay for it. So I understand that the intent, but at the same time, I'm working with the stakeholders who provided this information, that where they believe that this could work within the current or existing law. Madam Speaker, and that's how I believe most of us put bills in place, we work with the stakeholders, that eventually we find the underlying problem that they feel is, that they don't have enough teeth, and that's what we're trying to do. Now, if this doesn't work, I agree with the previous speaker. I'd like to sit down, maybe work with him, maybe this existing law may not meet the issue. It may be where it's actually being enforced out of. So, yes, I certainly agree that if this does not work, but this is what they're asking for. So going back to the amendment, Madam Speaker, I... Maybe I need more time to think about it, but right off the top, I was thinking that this may level the playing field, and it goes back to the basic principle of advertising. If you want to advertise more, you pay more. So, and it may apply to putting it out there, but again, that wasn't the intent of introducing this legislation. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Is there anybody else? Senator Adda, would you like to close? So there is an objection to the Adda amendment. All in favor, then, of Senator Adda's amendment? Please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six. See, you got six? You didn't realize that? Sorry, the amendment failed. On the main motion I have here, the only one left, and the main motion is Senator San Nicholas.
You know, when I first came across this bill and I was reading through it, a lot of things were coming through my mind, and a lot of them I shared already. Is the issue the details within the statute, or is the issue the statute itself and who is actually responsible for making sure that it's getting enforced? And while we can tweak and mold the details within the statute, if the entity responsible for enforcement is where the root of the problem is, then, you know, we probably need to reconfigure the entire statute as it relates to who's responsible for carrying it out and enforcing it. And I think that that's actually where the problem lies. I don't think that it has too much to do with the details at this point, because the details have been completely, you know, put off to the side. I remember in the recent election, having heard some discussion earlier about Senator Yamashita's amendment to this particular statute in the last legislature that reduced the sign size to four by eight. A lot of us followed that, but maybe in the last two weeks before the election, in this general election, I did see a certain candidate put up their own large, I think it was like eight by 16 or something. It was definitely beyond the size of the four by eight. And these were in the two weeks prior to the general election. I think it was two weeks. It felt like two weeks. Time was going by so fast. But, you know, and I would just drive by, and every time I'd drive by those signs at the side of the road on public easement, I'd be like, you know, as a candidate myself, wow, you know? Here I am, following as best as possible the rules and, you know, just blatantly, there's an individual who doesn't have to. And whether that individual is fined or not, I really don't know, but I seriously doubt it. One of the other issues that I had early on the campaign had to do with private property and the placement of signs, because the statute at the time, before we amended it in this body, didn't permit large signs on private property, but we had them anyway, all over the place, and there was no enforcement or regulation on them. And there were dozens and dozens of these signs. And, you know, if you're the individual who wants to put up those big signs and disregard what the statute said at the time, you know, good on you. You were able to do it without having to suffer any penalties. And that's kind of where it comes down to, Madam Speaker, with respect to the details of the statute. Because if we're going to amend law, and we're going to say, "You know what? We expect everybody to follow this law, and if you're going to be a good candidate, you're going to be a good example, and you're going to follow every single provision, good on you. But if you're going to be another kind of candidate that's not going to follow every single provision, and it's not going to get enforced," then what happens is we create an unlevel playing field between those candidates who are following the letter of the law and those candidates who aren't. And for those candidates who aren't, they're getting an unfair advantage, getting exposures and getting presence and securing very, very good locations outside of what the law limits. I mean, look, in the law, we're even, this bill's proposing to lower it from 90 days down to 60 days, but what if somebody puts something up 90 days in advance? We saw signs go up on private properties that were in clear violation of the dimensions. There weren't any, there weren't any fines assessed. I think those were even in advance of the 90 days. So I think, Madam Speaker, that the underlying problem that we have here is an enforcement problem. Perhaps it's a funding problem, perhaps it has to do with the details in the statute, but I think that before we even get to any of that, we need to have an entity that's actually going to go out and enforce the law. Enforce the law with the resources they have and enforce the law if the statute's currently on the books. And then when we see that there are actually issues that we need to go in and tweak, and let's go in and tweak those, but to say that, oh, we're going to solve our sign problem by lowering it from 90 days to 60 days, I don't think it's going to solve it. And to say we're going to solve our sign problem by creating all these different fees that can be assessed, fees haven't been assessed. No matter how low they are, they haven't been assessed. So adding more isn't going to change anything if it's the exact same enforcement authority. Now, the question of signs and public easements, I think, is a question that is very valid. It's something that needs to be addressed by this body, and I think that getting as much stakeholder input as possible would help. I think that what we really need to step back and consider is, who is the right entity to actually go out and enforce these laws? I don't think a political appointee is the right entity, because if you're in the right party, or if you're in the right, you know, if you're the candidate, you just, I mean, it's natural for that political appointee to not be inclined to enforce it as rigidly if the opposite were true, or to not enforce it, period, which has been more or less the case. So we need to revisit this, Madam Speaker, from a bigger picture, I think, and perhaps these details have merit. But as the case is with the reducing of the size of signs down to four by eight, owned to have it not followed two weeks before, I mean, it really begs the question, are we really changing the legal environment in a manner that's going to result in what we're trying to achieve? Or are we just tweaking these things that we can say that we fixed it when, in reality, it's not going to happen? I mean, and those, I think, are the travesties of lawmaking, where we change the law, saying we're making it better, but, I mean, for all intents and purposes, we know that it's really not changing much of anything at all. And maybe the hope is that by touching it now, by talking about it the way we are, someone's going to do things differently, but that just hasn't been the case over the years, Madam Speaker. I really think that perhaps the entire enforcement aspect of the statute needs to go to either the Attorney General or the, I think, the Office of Public Accountability. Maybe the citations can be issued by the mayors. I don't know. I mean, it really needs to be reconsidered, I think, on a much bigger level. So before getting into any of the details of the individual bill, I would like to first make a motion that we refer the bill back to committee for us to be able to, I mean, at least take it into 33rd and evaluate it more from that bigger picture perspective, rather than going into the 33rd and saying, "We've already fixed the issue," when I really don't think that that's going to be the case with Bill 293. So that'd be my first motion, Madam Speaker.
There is an objection. I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor, then, of sending the bill back to committee? Please raise your hand. The amendment failed. Senator, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I did have a lot of questions that I would like to proffer to the author. I guess I'll start with the most obvious one, starting on page four, line four. You know, the current law says you can't put any signs up until 90 days before the election. And then the original bill that was drafted lowered it down to 60. And then the author substituted a bill that lowered it down to 30, and then he amended it back up to 60. And so I'm trying to figure out, where is there a rhyme or a reason to the number of days? And what makes 60 days the magic number now versus 90 days as it relates to the safety of the community with respect to signs and public easements?
Senator, do you yield to the question?
Yes, Madam Speaker, and I thank the colleague for bringing, raising that concern. Actually, Madam Speaker, the intent was for, to reduce the amount to 60 days, and when the substitute version came out, it was stating 30 days, so I just made that minor correction on the floor. The reason for that, Madam Speaker, is, I'm not sure if my colleague read some of the testimonies provided by some of, not only DPW but GBB and those that are engaged in contracts out there. There's been a clear issue, not only with the safety issues, but we've had issues with our current contracts out there, working around a lot of these political signs that are out every two years throughout our island. And a lot of them are on easements, which are part of these major contracts throughout our scenic routes and throughout our government and easements. There's been a big problem for these contractors, and they've pointed it out to DPW, and they've also pointed it out to GBB. By reducing the time, Madam Speaker, at least, it does, in a sense, trickles back into the costs associated with these guys working around and making it more efficient for them to work around signs, or not having to necessarily work around signs, because now we're reducing the amount of time that these signs are out there. So by reducing it, makes it more efficient for these existing contracts and also allows that our people to not tolerate, have to tolerate it for another 30 days. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Senator, are you still able to answer your question?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Well, I'm still trying to understand, though, I mean, so are signs good on the side of the road, or are they not good? I mean, should we have them for 60 days or not? Should we have them out in the public easements at all? I mean, or should we not have them on public easements? You know, if they're not supposed to be there because people are working around them, then why is it less okay for it to be 60 days? I mean, we went from 90 to 60 to 30, back up to 60, you know? So at what point, Madam Speaker, is it, you know, achieving the desired outcome, or is the outcome supposed to be to remove the signs altogether? You know, so I'm still unclear as to how 60 days makes it, you know, less of an eyesore or more safe.
Oh, then Senator, you did try to answer your question, so unless you want to make an amendment?
I think it underscores, Madam Speaker, the need for us to get more stakeholder input for the issue, because, again, 90, 60, 30, I mean, at what point do we all agree that this is something the community stands behind? Especially because we've amended it already three times in this one intention of discussing My other question, Madam Speaker, regards to enforcement. For example, the recent amendment on page three, line 12, where we took out the need for us to have signs up on fences at schools or whatever, I mean, that's a really great amendment, but, again, the question of enforcement comes into play, because in the bill, it says that they're supposed to give them 48 hours' notice on page four to remove signs that are in violations of any of those other sections. But if you're going to put up signs on the fences of the schools the day before the election, I mean, how does all the fines kick in, or how does the penalties kick in for that? Or are we, again, creating another avenue where the candidate who ignores the law and puts up signs on the school day is the candidate who's going to get the exposures at the expense of everybody else? at the expense of everybody else?
So do you have a question, specific question to, to that?
Yeah, how does, if the, if we're going to be having a restriction on putting up signs at the school sites, which I'm okay with, how does the fine mechanism kick in for somebody who puts one up, puts one up on the, the day of an election? I mean, who's, who's, is, is the same citation authority the one who's supposed to go out and find those individuals? And what happens if they don't? What happens if, you know, Senator so-and-so puts their signs up all over schools and everybody else doesn't? And the, the authority who's responsible for citing that Senator doesn't do it? I mean, are, and that's my biggest concern of this whole thing, Madam Speaker, we're, we're kind of creating a scofflaw, unlevel playing field here for those who are going to be bold enough to take that chance. So in the event that the law is not enforced, what's the penalty for failure to enforce? Do we have any penalty on the books? Or are we tweaking all of these enforcement details without having any enforcement, any penalty for lack of enforcement?
You want the author to respond to the question?
Sure.
Senator, do you hear to that question? That, you want to state the question again?
If there, what happens if none, if there isn't any enforcement? What's the consequence for a failure to enforce? Let's say on Election Day, someone puts all their signs up all over the schools and nobody gets fined, what's the consequence there?
Do you understand the question, Senator? Is there a penalty then for anyone who didn't follow the law, says that they can't put their signs on the school fence, and they do? Is there any penalty for that violation? I think Senator Espishu would like to respond. Senator Espishu?
Yeah, thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I could respond to the, the question. Since item three was amended, so that there's no, there's a prohibition against putting up political signs 100 feet of any entrance to any public school, or upon any public school property, I think the, the fact that this is now, if this bill passes and the governor signs into law, if this is now a matter of public policy, then the Guam Election Commission will assist in the enforcement of this particular prohibition. This matter came up at the roundtable meeting that we had prior to the general election. And in fact, the Guam Election Commission, they themselves were contemplating as to whether or not they should have candidates be allowed to put their posters on school fences, because this has been a problem for the, for the Guam public school system, system-wide. And so at the time, Senator Maschita was at that roundtable, and we obviously agreed that this would be a matter for the, the community weigh-in through its elected representatives. And now, since Senator Luntiaco's amendment passed, I imagine that if any candidate puts up their political sign on the day of the election, where they're not allowed to, those phone calls will be made to the Guam Election Commission, and their people will go around and enforce these things. And, and then now you have the principals that will be empowered to tell their facility managers that those signs should not be there, and to go and cut them down. It's that simple, Madam Speaker. And I think, I think the way it's written now is more than enough enforcement power to have either the Election Commission or even the Guam public school system. And, and, and the public will be the one to be the eyes and ears to see if there are any violations. Candidates, individuals who support a candidate, or the opposing candidate puts up something that, that is against the candidates that they support, certainly they would make those complaints into the Guam Election Commission as well. They, this is an area that the Guam Election Commission had a lot of concern with, because how do you define the 100 feet? And so I think now that this has been made clear, they would be more apt to enforcing it.
Senator?
I appreciate the response from the retiring speaker, Madam, Madam Speaker. It kind of underscores, though, I mean, what I'm talking about, because in the, in the most recent election, there were instances that were reported to me where individuals were told, no, you can't put a sign there, only to come by there a couple hours later and somebody else went and put a sign there. You know, and, and there's, and, and that's where the whole question of enforcement comes into play, and if there is a lack of enforcement, or if there's selective enforcement, you know, how does all that translate into a fair and level playing field? And so that's, those are just all the, the concerns that I have, Madam Speaker, with respect to, to the various elements within this bill, because so long as the existing framework is in place, there's a slippery slope for it to be enforced in one, in one fashion or another, versus it being enforced just, just blanket across the board and making sure that it's, it's, it's fair and equitable. And, and that was, that's, that's just a, a, another concern that I have with respect to page three, subsection three, along with, along with some of the other, the other items there. I mean, if we're gonna, if we're gonna do this right, and we're going to have our signs up in public easements, then it needs to be enforced fair and equitably across the board, the, the fines need to be assessed. You know, we can't have an appointed official just being able to say, we're not going to, I'm not going to enforce this provision or that provision. You know, and that's, that's kind of, that, that, that's a, that's a really big deal, Madam Speaker. Because for, for me, when we're passing law and we're making statute, the enforcement of that statute is so important, I mean, otherwise it completely defeats the purpose. But more dangerous still, the selective enforcement of a statute creates an unlevel playing field that gives advantages and disadvantages to people who are, it gives disadvantages to those who are following the law, and, and it gives advantages to those who are not following the law and disadvantages to those who are. And an environment where the rule of law is, is paramount, to have one where the law, the lawbreaker has an advantage over the one following the law, and the enforcement mechanism isn't sound, I mean, it just, it's, it's not, it's not, it's not something that makes me very comfortable, Madam Speaker. So I think that we can, my, my personal opinion with respect to this bill is, it represents, I think, a, a lot of work that we need to do to try and strike the balance between what's going to happen in terms of signs going up in public easements, and whether or not we're going to continue the practice, and how exactly we can craft the right regulatory environment to enforce this. I have reservations, I have, I have, I have deep reservations about moving forward a bill that tweaks what I think is an existing framework that, that isn't going to, isn't going to address the overall concern. And I'll, I'll keep that in mind as we proceed, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
You're welcome. Is anybody who hasn't spoken who would like to speak on the main motion? Going to call upon the author then to close on the bill?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I, first off, I'd like to proffer amendment on, on page three, just to make it clear. Some suggestions for some of the colleagues. On page three, line 14, item number four, no political signs or stickers may be posted upon any utility pole or guardrail.
So no political sign or, or bumper sticker?
Yes, ma'am.
May be posted on any utility pole and what?
And stickers.
Oh, and stickers.
I think, Madam Speaker, it would just be stickers, because...
Okay, signs and stickers.
Be posted upon any utility pole or guardrail.
Or guardrail. Okay, on the amendment, page three, line 15, no political sign and bumper stickers may be posted upon any utility pole or guardrail. No objection, so ordered. Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I, I, first I want to thank my colleagues for contributing to this legislation, Madam Speaker. And I know there's a lot of work that still needs to be done with our political signage, or in, in, in that case, the entire signage laws throughout our government. But, you know, we, we do need to take necessary steps to, to potentially get to where we want to get to, and again, we, we know that one bill's not going to solve it all. I heard a lot of my colleagues share a lot of great ideas and, and where we can go with this, and, and again, the previous colleagues also mentioned, maybe this is not where, as far as the enforcement arm should be, maybe it should be in another entity, and that's something we should have to study, and where it should be, and it maybe may not be under a political appointee. I certainly want to work with my colleagues to look at ideas that certainly can make the current or existing law a lot more forcible. Well, Madam Speaker, I, I've been through this process, this is my second time running, and I, I was driving on the road, the, right after, maybe a month later after campaign season or election, and my daughter pointed out and says, Dad, we're driving, driving through Agonatic Road. And goes, Dad, it's so nice out there. And I said, yeah, it is, it's always a nice day driving through the Agonatic Road, and, she basically said, no, no, it's really nice, it's just I don't see too many signs out there. And she's a 10-year-old. And, and you know, you have that in the mindset of a 10-year-old. It's nice for them to see it, but even at a 10-year-old, they can even also see that just, there is a big difference. And I think sometimes we got to look at that from a, maybe look at this from a 10-year, 10-year-old's perspective, that it is become an eyesore. I am part of the problem. And, and, and I'm not trying to pinpoint, I made it very clear, that I'm not trying to pinpoint any candidate here, or any of those who ran and may have not succeeded, but we, we are all involved, one way or another, when we put our signs up, and we have the responsibility to find a way to either reduce that time out there and address some of the safety concerns, some of the issues of aesthetics, what it does to the landscape of our, what we call paradise, every two years, that every two years, for almost a year, you will see political signs. One thing, Madam Speaker, I, I'm not going to say I can guarantee that this $25 per day per sign would, would work. But our goal of any legislations, we hope that it works, and we can follow through with those that are, that requested this legislation that we gave you the chief, let's see what you can do with it. Or come back and provide any needed revisions that make it more where they find the problems. So the, the other issue, Madam Speaker, I want to go back, is some of the issues that they've been pointing out for many years, that the, the Department of Public Works and GVB have had, is, they've had issues with their contractors out there. And again, there is a cost associated with this, because we don't know if it took maybe two weeks to do a cut along scenic routes or along our major highways, and it took them a little longer doing, as they say, it's taking a little bit longer to do it with the time during the political seasons, because they have to work around political signs, then there is some, we don't know what the number is, but I'm sure when there's a delay to a project, there is cost associated with that. But we don't know the exact number. But I'm, GVB have asked what that number is, if there's delays that are these political signs cause. I'm not disagreeing, Madam Speaker, that, 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 that we, leaving a sign out there for a longer duration may work or may not work for a candidate, but to reduce the timeframe out there, I can guarantee at least that, that our people won't see the sign for another, at least 30 days more during an election season. I can also guarantee if the law is enforced and these $25 fines per day are in effect, and a lot of the candidates are aware of it, and take the responsibility to take it down in a timely manner, I can guarantee you that we definitely will reduce the time our political signs are out there, and how long our people will have to tolerate with a political sign. I think 90 days or 60 days is more than enough time to get your message across out on the public roads. It, it also seemed that my colleague seemed like he was going down a path that we should look at this whole thing again on public easements. And maybe, maybe he may want to start the discussions in a complete ban on political signs on public property. He also authored legislation to allow it clearly, or legally, on private property. But I'm not sure what that solves. Maybe this clears up, you can put it on private property. But we don't know what that solves either, it just makes it clear. But I'm trying to deal with what people tell me out there in, in, throughout the campaign, past campaign trail, at least the two that I've been in. It's not, they're not asking us to, to remove our signs or take it down, they're just asking, can, can we find a way to address these signs? And, and you know, when we talk to those out there, a lot of times is, is, as some say, this is part of our process on Guam, this is part of our political process. Madam Speaker, there is no way in hindrance to anybody that wants to run for office. It's simply just reducing the timeframe, and we're not squeezing anybody's pocketbook unless they're not complying with the law. That's all we're doing, and that's the intent. And I thank my colleagues for their contribution to Bill number 293. And, and, Madam Speaker, I'd like to provide some additional sponsors or amendments to this, to include Senator Espishu, Senator Tonyada, and Senator Luntiaco.
On the amendment to add to Espishu, Tonyada, and Luntiaco as co-sponsors, hearing objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
So on the amendment then to send 393-32 to third reading file without any objections, so ordered. We're now on Bill number three. Senator, Senator Frank Uggan on Bill 306. Senator Uggan, okay, I'm going to move on to the Vice Speaker on Bill 344, on behalf of Speaker Ben Pangolin.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I'd like to move the Bill 344-32, substituted by the Committee on Appropriations, Public Debt, Legal Affairs, Retirement, Public Parks Recreation, Historic Preservation of Land, be placed in the second reading, and I'd ask for an opportunity for short discussion.
Proceed, Senator.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I'm very honored to ask for our colleagues' support of this piece of legislation that was initially introduced by our colleague, Senator Ben Pangolin. During the, when all the, year 2013, Christmas, I guess it was two, two years ago, last year, when we were releasing all of those tax refund checks, it came to light that there were several thousand tax refund checks from as far back as 2009, 2008, that had not been received by the intended recipient, the taxpayer. Senator Pangolin introduced this piece of legislation to require that the Department of Administration publish at least annually, and to update on a periodic basis the listing of all tax refund checks that have been prepared and have not been picked up by their, by the taxpayer, because either an address or something has happened. And to not only publish that in a paper of general jurisdiction, circulation, but also to, to publish it on a website, so that people can, can check to see whether or not their checks are, are on that website. And so the, the other part of the bill that Senator Pangolin wanted to have addressed was the fact that the money that's received, that should have gone to the taxpayer, does not suffer the cheat problems that we did happen in, in the last legis, earlier in the session. That the, the proposal in this bill is that the monies be returned to the, the Tax Efficiency Trust Fund for the payment of taxes. And so that's a second intent. The third part of this short bill is to make sure that the local Department of Revenue Taxation provides a service that you can get from the, from the National Internal Revenue Service, of being able to go online to find out the status of your tax refund, whether or not it's Status A, where there is a problem, at least to know that there is a problem, and to be able to have some way of being able to call in to find out how or what you need to do to be able to get your tax refund processed and your tax refund provided, provided to you. So I think it's a, it's an excellent bill. I'm glad he left it for us, and I'm hoping that my, my colleagues will, will support its, its passage to make sure that the money... to make sure that the money that belongs to the taxpayer gets to the taxpayer, the money that should be returned as taxes stays as taxes, and that we provide a taxpayer assistance program at Revenue Taxation to assist the taxpayers in making sure that their tax filings are processed, processed as expeditiously as possible, and to be notified if there is a problem that they need to address. So I thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
On the motion, anyone who'd like to speak? There being none, then, so on the motion to send 344-32 to the third reading file without any objection, so ordered. Bill Number 306, Senator Frank Uggan, you recognize?
Yes, Senator, you recognize? Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and good afternoon to our fellow colleagues. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move for the acceptance of Bill Number 306 as 32COR with the added verbiage "as amended" on the floor, that version, and accept that for purposes of discussion.
On the motion then to accept 306 as amended on the floor, no objections, so ordered, on the motion to place.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And I'd like to move for the placement of Bill Number 306 as 32COR, which reads, "An Act to Appropriate Funds to the Office of Veterans Affairs for the Implementation of the Guam Veterans Registry as Mandated in Public Law 32-101," placed in the third reading file for consideration by the body, Madam Speaker.
Okay, would you like to speak on it? You're okay? Okay, so on the motion then to send 306-32 to the third reading file without any objections. Oh, Senator would like to speak, Senator Mike Siniklas would like to speak.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Just a quick question for the author on page two, "The Implementation of the Guam Veterans Registry." It reads, "Notwithstanding any of the provision of law, the sum of $50,000 is appropriated from the General Fund to the Office of Veterans Affairs for the Implementation of the Guam Veterans Registry as mandated in public law 32-101," etc. I'm just, my question is, this $50,000, where, my understanding, and this goes back to a lot of questions I've always brought up whenever we do these kind of appropriations, and we just say we're breaking, we're taking it from the General Fund. My understanding is that the budget that we passed for fiscal year 2015 appropriated all of the money in the General Fund. And so, this $50,000 that's being appropriated now for this purpose, where's it coming from? Is it coming from existing, are we taking $50,000 from someplace that we've already appropriated to? Or are we going to have to increase the projections, the General Fund projections, by $50,000 in order to say that we're appropriating an additional $50,000?
Senator, do you want to the question?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and thank you for the question that's being posed. Madam Speaker, when this legislation was initially introduced, if you take a look at the numerical sequence, Bill Number 306, it reflected additional resources that were available fiscal year 14. I did request the Committee on Appropriations to consider reporting this out because we do have, at this point in time, as of November last year, public law 32-101, which establishes the Veterans Registry, that it needed that complementary legislation in terms of providing the funding and the mechanism for that. So, in response to the question, the question is, the funds as provided in the legislation would originate from fiscal year 15 budget, General Fund. But if the mover would like to make an amendment, then by all means, it's available to him. But this is, $50,000 is gonna originate from the fiscal year 15, General Fund, Madam Speaker.
So.
Senator, yes, you still have the question.
Thank you. So, I guess what we need to do then is, we just need to identify where this $50,000 is coming from, from the General Fund. And so, I would assume then that we would want the budget of the Guam Veterans Affairs Office to pay for this, the implementation of this registry. So I'm going to assume that we're gonna take it from the Veterans Affairs Budget.
Senator, do you want to respond to that question?
Madam Speaker, in reference to the committee report and the information that was provided during the course of the budget discussion, it was stated that the additional $319,000 that was provided in fiscal year 15 had already been exhausted in terms of procuring supplies, materials, addressing some of the facility requirements, as well as several individuals to assist with the maintenance and the operations of the Guam Veterans Affairs Office. So, the request that came from the administrator of the Guam Veterans Affairs Office is for additional funds to be able to implement public law 32-101. And that's where it's clear that this would come from the General Fund. It would originate from the General Fund.
Oh.
No, there was no effort to adjust the General Fund revenues.
Okay, so I think we need to take a brief recess.
And the sign, "They've served our country."
The legislature is back in session. Senator Uggan, on your bill to set aside until we identify the funding source?
Madam Speaker, I object to that motion.
I'm only suggesting. Okay, Senators Siniklas, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just need to make it very clear that I don't oppose the cause for the appropriation at all. The bottom line is if we're going to fund it, the money needs to come from somewhere. And if we're just going to say it's coming from the General Fund, then the question becomes, you know, where are we taking the money from? Because we've already appropriated everything that we've projected, unless we increase the projections in the General Fund. So, either language needs to be included here to amend the projections of the General Fund that we passed in the previous budget bill and increase it by $50,000, or we need to identify where that $50,000 is going to come from. A third option is to appropriate from the General Fund subject to additional revenues above and beyond projections. But then that would basically require that we bring in more than what we anticipated, and then this gets funded. But either way, Madam Speaker, we're going to just have to make sure that we're gonna be funding the very good cause with actual hard dollars that are gonna be available. So, I may proffer that amendment, subject to, you know, revenues exceeding projections, if we're not able to come up with another solution. But I would prefer that we either identify where the money is going to come from within the General Fund, or make the decision of whether or not we're going to increase the General Fund projections. But, I mean, those really are the only options available to us, Madam Speaker. Otherwise, we really are opening up a very slippery slope if we pass a bill that just has this kind of language, because then what's to stop us from just keep passing bills that has the same kind of language? You know? I appropriate $4 million to go fix Route Four from the General Fund. I appropriate X million dollars to go hire more police officers from the General Fund. I mean, you really, we can do that, but if the money's not there, then it's just not gonna get funded. So, I mean, those are all good causes, you know? But the reality is that budgeting requires us to be able to identify the funds and make those funds available for what it is that we're trying to accomplish. Now, maybe small amounts can be slipped into the radar because cash management within the executive branch can make it happen, but the reality is that that's technically overspending more than what was actually appropriated. You know, so we really need to come to terms, this is a bigger issue, Madam Speaker, we really need to come to terms of whether or not we're gonna be appropriating money like this at all. And if we are, then we need to make sure the language is clear as to how exactly the mechanics of this are going to work. Otherwise, as I was just chatting with the chairman of OFB, I might as well start introducing bills that are just appropriate from the General Fund as if the money's gonna magically appear, you know? The big difference between the budget of the government of Guam and the budget of the United States of America is they can print the money and they can fund the project even if their revenues are short. All they gotta do is, as an appropriations measure, but there's no shortage of dollars. In our budget, we're limited to what we bring in. And we've already projected a very rosy picture for 2015. So, you know, for us to be increasing those projections would have its own ramifications. So, I guess I raise this point, and I yield to the mercy of the body to provide the guidance as to exactly how they want to proceed with this, because it's gonna set a precedent for exactly how we're going to be appropriating going forward, because I'm sure there's many of us within this floor who'd love to just be able to write a bill and appropriate from the General Fund for good causes, because there are a lot of them that need to get And I guess I'll yield to whoever else wants to speak, but absent any other suggestions, I would like to reserve the opportunity to make that amendment that I did suggest earlier, unless somebody else has a better idea, Madam Speaker.
I will allow for that. Is there anybody who would like to speak on the motion? There's no one, so Senator, I'll give you that opportunity then to make the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So I guess, in an attempt to make this fit in with what we need to accomplish here, notwithstanding any of the provision of law, the sum of $50,000 is appropriated from revenue, from revenue in excess of projections, from revenue in excess of 2015 projections of the General Fund. So the new language would be after the word "from," revenue in excess of 2015 projections of the General Fund.
On the amendment? Any objections? Anyone who'd like to speak on it? Senator Uggan?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and I want to thank the mover of the amendment in regards to recognizing that certainly there has to be a funding source identified. In this case, it was a general provision, recognizing the intent of public law 32-101, which is establishing a registry that would allow for firm numbers to continue to be presented to the Veterans Administration and to acquire some federal funds above and beyond what the community of Guam presently receives. And that's where the intent of this legislation comes in, is making sure that any numbers that are officially adopted by this community out of the appropriate Guam Veterans Affairs Office provides that semblance of certified numbers so that in fact, we can get additional services to this community. Also, Madam Speaker, you know, in light of the amendment, one of the comments by several of the federal officials that were here on December 3rd to provide a benefits and a healthcare conference to our veterans on island, it stated exactly that, that they need numbers to be able to reaffirm so that in fact, they can take those numbers to Washington, DC, and see if they can enhance some of the services and benefits that our veterans in our community are receiving. So, it's certainly, I appreciate the motion recognizing that any revenues above and beyond the projected revenues that was previously adopted by this body, that those resources, $50,000 of those, should those revenues be exceeded, that will go to the Guam Veterans Affairs Registry so that in fact, they can proceed aggressively in complying with this law. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
On the amendment, is there anybody else? Senators Siniklas, do you want to close on your amendment? No objections to the amendment which is saying that the $50,000 is appropriated from revenues in excess of 2015 projections of the General Fund to fund the Office of Veterans Affairs. Objections? So ordered. On the amendment then to send, the motion to send 306-32- On the amendment then to send, the motion to send 306-32 to the third reading file without any objection, so ordered. We're going to move on to, and there's been an agreement between the two senators on their bills. I know Senator Yamashita's bill is next, but she's yielded to have Senator Rodriguez present his bill first, which is 381. Senator Rodriguez, you're recognized.
Good afternoon again. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you very much to Senator Yamashita for yielding her time. Madam Speaker, I move to place Bill 381-32 as substituted by the Committee on Health and Human Services, Health Insurance Reform, Economic Development, and Senior Citizens to the third reading and be allowed to briefly discuss it.
You may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 381 is an act to establish the Anesthesiologist Assistant Act. A qualified anesthesiologist assistant is an allied healthcare worker who has satisfactorily completed anesthesiologist assistant program, granting a master's degree, has been certified by the National Commission for Certification of Anesthesiologist Assistants, and has been credentialed by the institution. Anesthesiologists assistants are not trained to make medical judgments. All states require direct supervision by the anesthesiologist and participation in care provided by anesthesiologist assistant. Although the anesthesiologist assistant is an advanced-level allied healthcare worker, he or she is not an independent practitioner. All state statutes, Madam Speaker, and regulations specify the requirements for medical direction of anesthesiologist assistants by an anesthesiologist legally authorized to deliver anesthesia care. The intent of this measure, Madam Speaker, is to establish the practice of anesthesiologist assistant on Guam and to designate the Guam Board of Medical Examiners as the governing body. We shall have full regulatory purview and administrative authority over the licensure and conduct of the anesthesiologist assistant. And so what we're trying to do here, Madam Speaker, is if we can, if you recall, maybe not too long ago, several years ago, that we really had a shortage of anesthesiologists at our hospital. And although we now have about, I believe, five to six anesthesiologists on island, it's more than what we've had, but it's still really not enough to have a full coverage of the hospital. And so what this does here is that it authorizes a practice where you're including now an anesthesiologist assistants in the anesthesia care team. You know, what is required is that if this act, if this legislation passes, is that we set the framework here of what could be done by anesthesiologist assistant, but really it still has to go to the Guam Board of Medical Examiners for them to promulgate the rules and the protocols needed for these anesthesiologist assistants to operate. If you recall about a few, maybe a few weeks ago, or maybe just a week ago, there was a story in the paper about a lawsuit that was filed against the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority about, I believe, a child who did not receive immediate anesthesia care. I'm not saying that it's because of, you know, because of a lack of anesthesia at that time. All I'm saying is that, at least from what we've read in the media, what we know from this case, is that what was reported was that there was only one anesthesiologist available, but at that time, the patient wasn't in the hospital, it wasn't available for that patient. And so what this does here is that you have an anesthesiologist who then now will be able to have an assistant under his direct supervision be able to perform the services and put people under anesthesia. And so there's, you know, this is happening throughout the states. And so what we're attempting to do here is provide a necessary tool to our medical professionals to be able to incorporate, implement this type of care here on our island. And so again, Madam Speaker, I ask our colleagues to please consider and vote for this measure. What it does is set the framework and it's still going to go to our professionals, subject matter experts, the doctors and the Board of Medical Examiners, for them to now put together the proper protocols to actually make this work. So thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. On the motion? On the motion then to send 381-32 to the third reading file without any objections, so ordered. Senator Yamashita on Bill 376-32?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I ask that Bill Number 376-32-CRR, as substituted by the Committee on Rules, Foreign and Micronesian Affairs, Human and Natural Resources, and Election Reform, be put at the third reading file, and I ask to be able to speak briefly on it?
You may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, we all clearly remember the debates, the conversations, the roundtables and the public hearings relative to the minimum wage that we passed during this current term. And we all paid attention to the different aspects of raising the minimum wage. And this measure is really to deliver the Guam story. Today, if you even go on the website and you study and you look about where our nation is as far as minimum wage goes, you'll see our nation represented and our federal government represented, but one more time, Guam is not represented. And I think it's very important that we do, we tell our own story. We know that there are six states that don't have a minimum wage, and we know that most states have a minimum wage between $5 to $9. We know through executive order President Obama has said that our minimum wage for federal folks would be $1010 and would be phased in. And a lot of this conversation was based on the demographics, and we know that most of our human capital across the nation, 44% of them are unmarried without kids. The next percentage of workers that we're talking about are married people without kids. And then it's married people with kids. And then the last aspect of people that the minimum wage will impact is our unmarried people with kids, our single parents. And I would suggest, Madam Speaker, that once we get our data all in front of us, the demographics, what it looks like, this actually might flip-flop for Guam. Guam's, we have a high percentage of single parents raising children. We have a high percentage of unmarried people with kids trying to balance two or three jobs while taking care of their kids and taking care of their parents. But I think that demographic piece is really important to put down in front of us. In all of the roundtable conversations, we talked a lot about job loss and job growth, and many studies say across the nation, there is no job loss, so that's really a myth, and that there's different demographics that really keep our jobs, our economy healthy. But I think we need to see that for ourselves. As we phase in our $8.25 minimum wage, at the end of that one year, what has happened? Was there job loss or was there job growth? Did our demographic shift from our unmarried with kids to our married without kids? Those are the kinds of questions that we give you in the 33rd Guam Legislature, the hard, concrete data, so that we're no longer looking at a national website and speculating, but you can then say, based on our studies here on Guam, this is what has happened, that there was no job loss, that there was job growth, that while there may have been some impact for our small businesses, it was to this degree. We talk a lot about a minimum wage and a living wage. And that story for Guam has to be told because the Guam story is different from the country's story. Our cost of living on Guam is incredibly high for a variety of reasons. I think it's great that the price of gas is now going down. I put half a tank of gas in my truck today and I only had to pay $37. I was like, wow, that's pretty incredible. That's pretty incredible. But across the nation, it's going down under $2. It's different. It's very different. To buy milk, I pay over $5 for a gallon of milk. I do not believe my son Ryan pays that much in San Francisco for his, or maybe in San Francisco you do, but maybe elsewhere they don't. My point is the buying power shifts when you come home, when you come to Guam. And I think that story needs to be told. I think that this measure, this whole idea was a compromise measure as we had different organizations, as we had President Rhodes, I'm trying to remember the exact title of her organization, hospital, no, hospitality, her hospitality organization, she was here, the Chamber of Commerce was here. There were a variety of folks who came and wanted their voices told, and I, you know, I listened to those leadership groups. But for me, what I really listened to were the small business owners who came in and who found the courage to come into our public hearing and to tell their story. And those were their stories. But what I think what the legislature wants to do, as it is clear that we're going to look at 925 or $1010, that has been made very clear to me, that we do want to proceed to give the living wage or the buying power to those most at risk. We know, Madam Speaker, that on our island, 160,000 people on this island, 44,000 of us, receive some sort of assistance. That, to me, is unacceptable on a variety of levels, and solutions, for me, are glaring all around. And I think we've begun to address those. But for now, right now, how do we pay our bills? How do we cope with the challenges? How do we keep moving forward? And we want to say to our partners, our small business, the economic engine of our island, this is what the data is showing us. We want to incorporate what the economists have said, and we want the government to be able to put together a proposal about what it would look like. And so this is really a very simple measure that says a study shall be done. And it's talking about the purposes and the needs of financial impact. It talks about the positives and not the positives, the adverse impacts and the beneficial impacts. And those are all at a minimum. So of course, whoever is going to develop the proposal for this will add. And I would hope that what would happen is that the proposal would be put together, I would think that Department of Labor would take the lead and would invite those who are interested to the table to say, what is it that you want? What do you think needs to be addressed? We have lots of local genius on this island, the University of Guam, who can come and help form out what it should look like. Now, as in the previous measure for our registry for our veterans, I know the funding is an issue. And on Section 2, Line 21, this language really, at that time when we passed the minimum wage increase, this was language that was reached out, I'm sorry, was reached with the front office, the governor's office, that they would find the funds necessary to complete the Independent Economic Impact Study. And in just listening to what had happened with the previous measure or two measures previously, perhaps this is not good enough. Where are you going to take from? How do you impact what has already been appropriated? And so two things. One, I would proffer amendment to utilize the same language that worked with our veterans' registry. It didn't get an objection and it passed. Or I can actually put this to the side and communicate with the front office to see if they've identified a particular funding stream for this. I would ask for guidance either way.
Thank you. I don't want to be the one to make the decision, of course. I would ask that you make the motion instead.
May I ask that our Chair for Finance render what his thoughts are on this? Either way, for me, I'm willing to either proffer the amendment that passed or...
He has raised his hand to speak, so maybe while he is, he might address it. Mr. Vice Speaker? On the motion? And, of course, on the question? To provide your guidance.
On the issue of where the money is going to be coming from, the Office of Finance and Budget is not designed to find these for you. You're supposed to be able to say where this is going to be coming from and will be able to determine whether or not that is a viable source. You remember, Madam Speaker, since the very beginning, when I first came to this legislature and I joined you, I'd been wanting to get authorization legislation. And it was the determination of the body at that point that, no, because we didn't want people just authorizing and saying, well, I authorized it, but it wasn't appropriated, so blame the Appropriations Chair. So people are going to want to do some appropriation. They should find the money and point out where they want to take it from.
But you do have to, okay. All right. Senator Yamashita?
Thank you. And so, Madam Speaker, what I would ask is that if I'm allowed to put this aside, have some communication with the governor's office to find out what they would be in support of, and then bring it back to the body for consideration.
So the motion is to set aside?
Thank you.
Are you going to speak on that motion to set aside?
Just a point of inquiry, Madam Speaker. There are some other concerns that I wanted to bring up as well, to be considered with respect to the bill. So I was wondering if prior to setting aside for that particular purpose, we can still discuss some of the other issues within the bills that, as we do set it aside for that one purpose, it can also be set aside with the purpose of clarifying some of the other questions that I might raise with respect to the measure.
Okay. So I guess I would allow that then as well, so that then, you're right, during the time that it's being set aside, the dialogue can continue. So you may, you do have the floor then?
Okay. If the author has concluded her, I didn't want to interrupt her.
Oh, no, of course, her motion was to set it aside, but you've contributed to that discussion is that... Well, but what the senator is asking for is that, based on the fact that it's going to be set aside and there's some dialogue that can continue while it's being set aside, for the senator then to come back with some answers, which, you know, I would allow for. So Senator, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. With respect to the bill, I do support the need for us to be able to do this study. I was having a sidebar conversation with the Chair of the Office of Finance and Budget with respect to dates, hoping that we can come to a more expedited review process that would allow us to be able to look at the year in question, but I'll leave that to him. I think he'll be able to handle that. What I wanted to talk about more was the independent economic impact statement and what we list out here to address. Now, I know that it says at a minimum it will address the following, but I just had a general concern about how the tone of all of those, of the first five criteria were almost, I don't want to, I'm not trying to interpret anything for anybody, but for me and my interpretation of this, it interprets almost as seeking specific calculations that would potentially be detrimental to a minimum wage increase. If you'll allow me to explain. Item one asks that the study look at the proposed need for a minimum wage and the risk and cost of increasing the minimum wage. Item two only seeks to study the minimum wage increase and its impact upon persons or corporate entities affected by the increase. Item three looks to address the increase or decrease in the cost of living on Guam. Item four, the increase or decrease or the direct or indirect impact on jobs, the number of jobs. And item five is the cost of doing business. Now granted, of course, if a minimum wage does positively affect those things, it'd now be good for the minimum wage. If those data points go negative during a minimum wage increase, then of course that would be detrimental to a minimum wage increase. It is important for us to study those things, but what I was hoping was if we could add a few more criteria to the study, just to try and balance out the points that are reviewed here. And one of the ones that I was going to suggest was an impact, on item seven, to study an impact on welfare rolls, the number of people who are on welfare as a result of a minimum wage increase, not only the number of people, but the dollar amount of public assistance that's provided. You know, that'd be a very good thing to look at, because as we increase the minimum wage, are we also decreasing the number of people who are dependent on public assistance? Another question that'll be worth looking at is the impact of a minimum wage increase on the money velocity within Guam, including relevant multiplier effects and subsequent economic benefits, if any. One of the points that I raise about a minimum wage increase is we do have some industries that they export a lot of their profits. And, you know, that's, of course, natural for a foreign-owned enterprise, but as we increase the minimum wage, we do have more of those dollars go into the pocketbooks of our local people who then spend it in our local economy, and that creates a money velocity environment where dollars begin circulating locally as opposed to profits just being exported off island. And so I wanted us to be able to study, does the money velocity rate increase if we have a higher minimum wage? And if it does increase, what's the multiplier effect as a result of that higher money velocity rate? You know, does the dollar... You know, does the dollar then turn into $1.3, you know, because it's circulating throughout the economy? And if it does, then what are the subsequent economic benefits to that? So, and those are just two of the items that I was able to just conceptualize going through this. I would like for us to probably spend a little bit more time, and I'm glad we're setting it aside, because I would like to spend a little bit more time coming up with some other, some other points that we would like to have studied as a requirement in this public law. And the only reason why I would like to include it is because while the original language states that this is going to be what's studied at a minimum, it could also be the only thing that's studied. I mean, we're pretty much living it up to the discretion of whoever has the RFP to go out and study what they want to study. But usually when we issue out an RFP and we spell out, you know, these six items, it's only going to be those six items. They're not going to throw in a bonus item. You know, so I would like for us to probably come up with a list that includes some other, I think, comprehensive data points that may not necessarily buttress the argument for our minimum wage, but would provide a more comprehensive picture of exactly what occurs here on Guam when the minimum wage does go up. It is important for us, and I do agree, that Items One through Five do need to be studied. But I do think that there are some additional areas, too, that are of benefit to our community that do need to be looked at as well, including our welfare rolls, our public assistance roles, how many people are on them, how many dollars are being spent on them, and whether or not increasing wages here on Guam results in a higher rate of money velocity here on the island that results in a greater multiplier effect and economic improvements that way. So, there are other items I probably would want to come up with, but those are just the few that I was able to do so in the time that we got around to this bill. So, I would like, I guess, for the author to consider whether or not we can entertain something like that when we come back to this bill after, after setting it aside for that one item, and I will have others that I would like to suggest at that time, if the author would be so kind to allow us to have that discussion.
Well, that's why I've allowed you to go ahead and state that, so that then the author have heard about it, and definitely the dialogue can continue between you and the author as well, or any others. So, on the motion to set aside, hearing no objections, so ordered. Bill Number 391, Senator Tony Ada, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to make a motion move, amended Bill 391-32 as amended by the Committee on Aviation, Ground Transportation, Regulatory Concerns, and Future Generations, and this is an act to amend Paragraph 14 of Section 3101-F of Chapter 3, 16 GCA Motorcycle License, road exams to the third reading file. I'd like to speak on the motion, please.
You may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, as you know, previously at public hearings of Bill 22530 and 8732, motorcycle enthusiasts testified before this body that majority of severe motorcycle injuries were from driver inexperience. And just to refresh our memories on Bill 8732, that was the helmet law, and also the operating of a motorcycle, also operating a motorcycle that was too large for the operator. And so what had happened was that in response to this, the legislature enacted a limitation on using a motorcycle that was no larger than the ones used to successfully pass the road exam. So, and for an example, if you used a motorcycle that was only 250 cc's, then that's all you could ride was 250 and below. If you rode a 500, you could only ride 500 and below. Well, the problem with that new law is that the motorcyclists had to get a new license every time they bought a larger motorcycle. So, if I went out and bought an 883, I would have to test again, go back and take a test for the 883. And if I bought a larger bike and so forth, I would have to take another test to test on that bike. The two problems with that is that, first, revenue and taxation doesn't have enough examiners to handle that type of capacity of people always coming back every so often to change their motorcycle license from whatever cc to the next higher up, or whatever they decide to test with. And second, is that the road exam is the same road exam regardless of what the cc is. So, if you tested with an 883, it's the same as a 1340. And we found that since the enactment of 3252, what most states have done is they address the issue by defining motorcycles as a two- or three-wheeled vehicle with an engine size of over 150 cc. And that was the threshold. And what we did is that here, we also included in the substitute bill, is that we put a provision that anyone who operates a smaller motorized cycle, such a scooter or moped, that on the public roads, they would still have to be licensed with an operator's license or with the motorcycle license. So, you know, we're still taking care of the issue of ensuring that those mopeds or motorcycles, mopeds or scooters that are on public highways, that we know we have an operator that has a driver's license, that they know the rules of the road, but yet those that are licensed for motorcycles, we address that issue by ensuring that they have their proper motorcycle license. So, Madam Speaker, I ask for my colleagues' support in this measure, and I hope that we'll be able to get this passed so that we can address this slight flaw in what we perceive was helping as actually hindering motorcycle riders in their ability to actually pass a motorcycle exam. Thank you.
You're welcome. Senator Morrison on the motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I want to thank the author for allowing me to be a co-sponsor of this legislation. Again, I want to point back to when we inserted that language, that was the work that was done with the motorcycle community, and when we went out and did some research, the only state, actually even the Department of Public Works also testified that that was the only state that had a tier program that based it on the size of a motor or engine, that they would have to test up or test out of a certain size of engine. But I do understand the author, and I thank the testimony for those who also see this as a hindrance to a business to on the island that are wanting to participate in the examination process, and also pointing out that this, that some of the issues of many of these bike riders who may have the ability to operate and ride a motorcycle with a larger-sized engine, you know, we're hindering them to have the ability. I understand, Madam Speaker, that sometimes this is the only means of transportation for many of these folks, and I thank the author for correcting how we can go forward and allowing those who use motorcycles or motorbikes as a means for transportation to have the ability, if they test out with a cc that could, can allow them to operate a larger bike, then so be it. And then this points to an example of, you know, we can go and test with a, maybe a lower-sized four-cylinder engine, but we still can drive a V8 car out there. So, you know, it's, it goes to that principle as well, Madam Speaker. So, I thank the author for allowing me to be a co-sponsor and correcting this legislation that we recently had enacted into law. So, thank you.
You're welcome. On the motion? There being none. Senator, do you want to close or send it down? On the motion to send 391-32 to the third reading file without any objections, so ordered. Senator Respechel on Bill 399.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move to place Bill Number 399-32 as substituted by the Committee on Aviation, Ground Transportation, Regulatory Concerns, and Future Generations. I move that we place this in the third reading file.
Would you like to speak on it?
Yeah, just some discussion.
You may. Okay, you may.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, colleagues, this bill really allows consumers to get more use out of their tires by extending the deadline from six years to 10 years on those vehicles operated on the highways and roadways of Guam. And, you know, six years ago, in 2008, I was the original main co-sponsor of public law 29-120 that was introduced, I believe, by former Senator Ishizaki, which really required that this government set as its policy an expiration of tires to have a six-year shelf life or use life, and this was based on growing concerns at that time. And then in 2014, the U.S. Department of Transportation issued its study to determine that there really should be no shelf lives on these tires because of the new technologies undertaken to ensure the safety and reliability of these tires. And so this issue was presented to me by the Automobile Tires Dealers Association here on Guam, where they required that we revisit this provision of law. And so the end result really was a bill, and Bill 399-32, that rather than removing an expiration, having no shelf life at all, there's consensus that we provide for at least a 10-year limitation. And so what's happening now, these companies are seeing a lot of our people come to replace their, or have their tires repaired from a flat. And when they look at the tire, each tire, you can see the expert, the life of the tire by the different coating. Once, though, they determine that those tires are older than six years, they've been taking in the tires, and because of this law requiring people to purchase new tires, even though the threading was still good, and... So, if we pass this bill and it's signed into law, we would have those instances where people would not have to automatically turn their tires in for otherwise being still functional, still reliable, still consistent with all the safety standards, simply because the current law says that they have to do so. And so based on this amendment of law, it will give additional 10 years, and this would only be for those light vehicles. It would not cover trucks and buses, which will still have to be subjected to the six years expiration, because this current study does not really, did not really study these categories of tires, just those lightweight vehicles that I'm talking about. So, I asked support from our colleagues, and I thank the Oversight Committee for having a public hearing on this bill, and I thank all the individuals that came out to testify in support of the bill. I don't believe there, we have anyone on record that opposed this bill, other than a company who wanted to separate the light tires versus the trucks and buses, and this is what this bill has done from the very beginning. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. On the motion? On the motion, send 399-32 to the third reading file without any objections, so ordered. Yeah, the next bill looks a little bit more detailed, and it's going to take more time for discussion, so we'll just recess until tomorrow morning at 9:00.